Actually, also ACS member, Dr. Andrew Gupta is Assistant Professor in the Department of Mechanical, Industrial and Manufacturing Engineering at University of Toledo, Ohio. She received her PhD in Chemical Engineering from University of Rhode Island in her interfacial servo and transport lab study. Base change, it transfer on novel substrate in a transport mechanism across the cell membrane. Dr. Gupta has received funding from NSF, ACS, PRF, and hosts two provisional patents. She's an active member of AUK, ACS, North America, Semol, and the Society, and ASEAN, and has published her work in a variety of scientific and education journals. And she's also a lot of experience to share with people, girls, ladies, and a very exciting career. So let's welcome Dr. Gupta.
Thank you, Ken. I'm going to start sharing my screen. Is it working?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Hello, everyone. I'm glad to be here. I think I'm the odd one out signing in from the eastern time zone. So it's already past our lunchtime. Since I'm an academic, and academics like to talk too much endlessly. So if you think I'm exceeding my time, please feel free to interrupt and stop me. You can just cut me off because we just go on and on. The students know it, so they start packing their stuff five minutes prior to the end of class lecture time. So please feel free to cut me off if I'm extending my time. So in today's talk, I'm just going to talk about my journey. Again, I just started my career not too long ago. So it's just the beginning of my journey. And I do a lot of work with boiling. And as you can see, the bubbles from the video. So throughout the presentation, I'll show you some bubbles. And I'll talk about cooking and all those fun stuff. Just a brief background, I know Ken did a very good job introducing me. I moved to Toledo last summer. I got my PhD from University of Rhode Island. Before that, I was in Booster Polytechnic Institute getting my masters. I got my undergraduate degree from University of Mumbai. I have couple of publications, patents, and I have been featured on three journal covers in next. They will be published in next one month. And like Ken said, I have been fortunate to receive funding from Asian Society, NSF, and Brian would appreciate this. I work a lot with American Chemical Society, so I do have research grants from them. I have also received a project C funding. Addition to that, there's a program by American Chemical Society. It's called AACT. It's American Association of Chemistry Teachers. And I have been working with chemistry teachers through this ACS program. And in the next following slides, I will show you some of the interesting work we have done for K-12 outreach. When I'm not working on my scientific research, I have tons of hobbies. I crochet, I paint, and I do Iqibana. So I would echo with Claire that you know, having hobbies, when you are sewing or when you're doing things by hand, it improves your motor skills and it really helps in your science and engineering career. I'll show you few examples of how I'm using my love of painting in my scientific career. So this presentation is divided into three parts. I will begin by showing my journey, how I started and how and where I've moved. Along my relocation, I have picked up a few skills. And therefore, I have been working in multiple areas of medicine and energy. And in the second module, I will show you three examples of our K-12 outreach activities. I understand there might be some teachers in the audience. I would be more than happy to share my activity sheets, activities. So please feel free to email me and I will be more than happy to work with your section in designing K-12 outreach activities. I have been working on that for quite a few years and I really enjoy doing it. In the last segment, I will talk briefly about my research on boiling using graphene. This is one of the work that we started working on from last, I would say, four years. So I will keep it short and I will try to keep it broad. And I have been told many times, you work in medicine, you work in energy. You try to do many things, but I always believe that if you can design one thing, you can design everything. Big nearly was Italian artist and he has designed the New York subway map. And he's also designed a lot of fancy China wear. And believe me, there's no connection, but there's a connection, the skills of designing. So I can say if I have a lot of hobbies, painting and doing crocheting and arts, I can apply all of that in my science and engineering career. This slide is very complicated looking, just like my journey. So I moved to, let's say, 15 years ago, from Mumbai to WPI for my masters in 2005. In WPI, I was a master's student working on a research project with UMass Medical School. And we worked with the neuroscience department. And being a chemical engineer, I had to learn everything from the scratch. So if you can see this little gray stuff on top, it's a brain cell sitting on a novel carbon material. So basically, we were trying to design electrodes for brain surgeries and brain implants. And we were trying to learn if the neurons can grow on them and stay alive. So this was my master's project. I graduated in 2007 and I moved to the University of Rhode Island. The reason I went to University of Rhode Island, because one summer I went to Rhode Island. I fell in love with the beaches, very beautiful place. I didn't think twice because I was young. I felt, you know, if I, if I don't enjoy my location, I will never finish my PhD. So it worked out well. I went to University of Rhode Island. There we were working with Brown Hospital. We designed a lot of vaccines, immunological models with Brown Hospital. And then I graduated in 2012. Between 2007 and 2012, something really bad happened, Gulf of Mexico oil spill. If you remember, 2010, that was a big, big, big accident. Being in oceanography school, so University of Rhode Island is number one in the oceanography program. BP and Shell spent a lot of money in coming up with a research institute where they could work on this oil spill problem. And unfortunately, the department was shrinking and didn't have a lot of students. So while I was making my vaccines, testing them in mice, I was dragged into working on oil spill. And as a result, I graduated in 2012 with a job offer in Texas A&amp;M International University. So that remarked the beginning of my adult life, as you can see. And I moved to Texas A&amp;M International University. It's located in Laredo. It's a border town between USA and Mexico. I spent two years. So if you can see this photo, this is Rio Grande. On the other side, there's Mexico. On this side, there's USA. So I have spent two years in this wonderful town. And I picked up a lot of Spanish, learned life skills, learned a lot of Mexican cooking, the real Mexican cooking. I really made some great friends while I was working in oil spill project. We designed a lot of discussion system. So life happened and I moved from designing vaccines to working on oil spills. But I really enjoyed doing that. After spending time in Laredo, I moved from southern border to northern border in Rochester, New York. And as you can see this photo, it always snows in Rochester, coming from warm and hot India. This was a big change for me. And as you can see, this is USA border, there's Canadian border, and here we are on my beautiful Niagara Falls. In Rochester, I started working on lake projects. They are, they have beautiful Great Lakes, they have Finger Lakes. And I thought, you know, I have worked on oil spill. This is my bread and butter. So I was forcing myself to work on all of their water issues. In the meantime, Rochester General Hospital reached out to me saying, we have friends in Brown University and they mentioned one of the old graduates is here. And that's you. Are you interested in working on this vaccine we are making for children's ear infection? And I told them, you know, I'm working in water problems. I'm not interested. And somehow they kept coming back to me and we started working on very interesting projects for children's ear infection. In the meantime, I met another faculty who is actually world's top five in area of boiling. And he asked me, are you interested in making some coatings for me? I don't know any other chemical engineer. And he was a mechanical engineer professor. And I said, you know, I was busy focusing on oil spill. And these people dragged me to making vaccines. And now you're dragging me to your boiling. Who does boiling anymore? We know it's everything about boiling. There's nothing to learn about boiling. So I was not interested. But then he started coming up with smaller problems. Can you see if we have done this correctly, this graphene, this copper coatings? As a result, I started working in that area. And I ended up publishing 15 papers. We have, I have two patents already. So in short, the moral of the story is when I began my career, a lot of people approached me with their problems. I shut them out, but I start, they start dragging me into their problems. And as a result, I have been working in many different areas. And it's been a great journey because, because of that, I was able to obtain funding in different areas, which was always, which is always a good thing if you're an academia, you need funding to fund your students. And in 2019, I moved to Toledo. So I'm chemical engineer by training. All my degrees are in chemical engineering. And they had an opening in mechanical engineering. And someone reached out to me saying, hey, you have some great publications in mechanical engineering journals. We have an opening. Would you like to apply? And I said, why not? I mean, since I've been all over the place, this will be one more feather on my cap. So I applied and I moved here in 2019. And as you can see on this slide, so I have spot, stop number one, two, three, four. And here I am on my stop number five. I had couple of pit stops in the, in this process, but I'm not going to waste my time talking about those pit stops. So these are, I would say, the major stops in my journey. And if you recall, I mentioned painting being one of the important hobbies that I try to work on. And unfortunately, I don't get enough time. So what I'm doing now is I'm using my painting skills to design journal covers. So if you can see these three bottom pictures, these are all designed by me. And we are actually being featured on journal covers. And I started designing one journal cover. They liked it. And then now it's very addictive because now I like to paint my signs on journal covers. So this is one of the things I do to keep my hobby going while spending time in science and engineering. In the next few slides, I will talk about a few projects I have been doing with K-12 students. And most of them are through American Chemical Society. So like I mentioned, American Chemical Society has two different programs I'm focused on. So one of them is the seed program. So I bring in seed fellows who are in their high school. And they spend the summer working on research problems with my PhD and master's students. In the process, we had them writing their college applications. And some of them have actually ended up on my scientific publications too. So that's always a good thing for their CVs. And additionally, American Chemical Society collaborates with AACT, which is American Association of Chemistry Teachers. Through that program, we write a proposal. And so I write a proposal and a chemistry teacher from their school will participate on my proposal. And American Chemical Society use those. And then whoever they decide to fund, they give us $500 and that helps us buy the supplies. We design couple of activities and through which the students will come to the university campus, spend a day on activities, going around the campus. Sometimes they insist they want to sit in the classroom, so we let them sit in the classroom. And the chemistry teacher ends up getting a lot of hands-on activity modules. And sometimes the chemistry teachers try to also join our research program in the summertime to improve their CVs. The next three slides, I will talk about three different fun projects that I have developed for the students. And if there are any chemistry teachers in the audience, if you are interested, I have the activity sheets, I have those questionnaires, everything ready. So I can just email you the package. So this is the first activity we did three years ago. It's already published in Journal of STEM Education and you can read more about it. So what we did is we call them fake coveryards or juice balls. So what we do is you get sodium alginate. So there's a session from Cape Crystal. We get it from Walmart or any grocery store. And you mix it with juice. And once you have it ready, then you keep your calcium chloride bowl ready. So there's two ways, calcium chloride, of course, in solid form. So you have to dissolve it in water and make it into solution. Or sometimes you just buy the solution of calcium chloride. And then you take this juice that was dissolved in sodium alginate with a dropper. You drop little drops into this calcium chloride bowl. And you end up forming these pearls, these soda pearls. And if you use a syringe instead of a dropper, you end up making orange juice spaghetti, which is on your right side picture. And through this, we teach them chemical reactions. We also teach them about fluid mechanics because you're now using dropper versus syringe. So you're basically extruding and we test different viscosity. So with this particular activity, I was able to teach them a lot of different, a lot of different science and engineering concepts. They love making a big mess. And these, this is actually used in a lot of fancy restaurants as the molecular gastronomy experiment. So on top, you see the blue and yellow balls. And one was made by Hawaiian branch and the other one is Sunny D. And on the right, we tried it with soda. And the rightmost photo is the orange juice spaghetti. And this is a very fun experiment and we got a very good feedback from the students and the teachers. The second activity we did was product design. So everyone loves Kool-Aid. So we taught them how do you make Kool-Aid? You add Kool-Aid powder to water and you mix it. And it was as simple. And then we told them, how do you make hot and cold packs? And here you have, you have solid and salt going in the water. It either increases the temperature or it lowers the temperature. And we teach them about salt, solute, and solvent, how they come together. The molecules fight it out and end up becoming, coming together in solution. And we have created some comic strips because kids love reading comics. And if you give them a printed sheet with activity with typed Times Roman font, they don't find it as exciting. So what we do is we give them these comic lab sheets. And they really enjoy reading it and following it to perform the experiments. And once in a while, we would ask them, can you make your own comics? So you can see this one student who tried really his best to form, to create some visual comic-like experimental procedure. And on the right, the student said, you know, I give up. I'm just going to draw what I feel about this activity. So these are the activities we have been doing with K-12 students. And this particular activity was done with a K six students. And we don't leave teachers behind. And so we work with an education program that trains teachers to work in a magnet school. So the magnet schools are focused on pre-engineering curriculum. So this was a week-long workshop where we were training the teachers to be a chemical engineer. And we taught them about material, energy balances, thermodynamics, and few basic concepts used in chemical engineering curriculum. And one of the key examples we use is making biodiesel from waste vegetable oil. So we went to some local restaurants, got the waste vegetable oil, and we designed our biodiesel. This was also in collaboration with a mechanical engineering faculty who gave them a design challenge to design a pump that can be used in your garden. And that will run on this biodiesel you generated from waste vegetable oil. So on the bottom, you can see a sample sheet where the teachers are actually solving. A Fender Russo, I'm sure whoever's in chemical engineering in the audience would appreciate Fender Russo problem. And here is a cat drawing of a pump that can actually use this waste vegetable oil biodiesel to run their irrigation pump in the garden. So with all these activities, I, since my job is of training masters and PhD students, in next few slides, I'm going to show some of my key scientific results that got me to this job. And I will have a lot of fun videos like this one where I'm showing how you see boiling happening. And it's very interesting because you don't pay much attention to the bubbles. But bubbles are very important. Before I get to my science work, I just want to acknowledge all the students who have worked in last few years in my lab. So like I mentioned, I was very successful with recruiting students from ACSC to our university. And they continued on to working in my research labs. And they have presented their work at national conferences. And they always go back and thank ACSC program because without that program, they wouldn't have met me. And they wouldn't have applied to my university. And they wouldn't have worked, continued working in my research lab. So I, I'm a big advocate of ACSC program. And these are all the students I have. So this also resonates with a lot of questions that we were getting about the observation that being a female, I get asked a lot by female students. And when I started my career 10 years ago, I was, I would always get female students wanting to work with me. And I felt it was a very good thing, you know, I am promoting females in science and engineering. But at some point, I realized, what about male students? Do they think my science is not good enough? Or I'm not competitive enough that they want to work with me? So that question really bothered me because I, at some point, I would have 10 to 12 female students in my lab. And when we would go for that group picture, it would always be all females, which looked really good. And I'm, I felt really proud, but then that also made me wonder, why aren't the male students coming to my lab? Is my science or is my work not exciting enough? And that changed in the recent years. And how I changed that, I would say, I started giving more talks. I made myself more visible in the department. And initially, I was invisible, maybe because I was a young woman who doesn't wear black or pants as much. Prefers cute dresses and skirts. So you know, you get, people don't see you as, don't take you as seriously. But I told myself, I'm not going to change myself. I will just make my work become more visible. And so I just started giving more department talks, department seminar talks. And as a result, now you can see there are good, it's a good mix in my lab. I have both male and female students. So I would say, when people ask, what is your biggest milestone of your career? I would say diversifying my lab. I started with having only and always just the female students. And it's not because they felt I was great in my work. They just felt more comfortable talking to me and they saw me as their big sister, which was a good feeling. But then I think this is, this, these photos really make me proud that, you know, I was able to diversify, diversify my research group. And now I've come to a point that I have seven boys in my lab. So I have moved from having 12 female students to seven boys in my lab. And it's a big achievement because getting male students interested in your research lab, in your work, has been the biggest challenge. And I have been told by a lot of my supervisors that you only have a lot of female students. We need to diversify and I was quite successful in doing that. So we can talk more about this. This challenges about diversifying, having all females to all males in the lab. So I'll just give you a brief overview of my research lab, what problems we solve. Because I take pride in showing the diverse problems we are able to solve in the lab. So I'm a chemical engineer, but what I do really is more materials. So we work with soft materials that are polymers, liquids. And then we work with hard materials that are metals. And then we use metal coatings using different techniques. And there are two larger applications. So we focus on phase change heat transfer where we do boiling and heat management of electronics. And we also focus on drug carriers. So we have been working with NIH, like I'm fortunate and I just really interested in solving the problem. And we have been working with lipid membranes and liposomes that you can see, the orange ones. And we just found out a few days ago, I found out that the Corona vaccine they are testing is also lipid-based. And we have been working with Sirna. And the Corona virus has two things that we work on, lipids. And they have some proprietary RNA that's going in the vaccine. So it has been really exciting journey that, you know, I have continued working on different projects because the next Corona virus will have the components that we have already been working on. And so in next few slides, I would just focus on my boiling work. Because I understand this is a notic society. So we want to see more of the mechanical engineering work as opposed to my cancer treatment and Corona vaccine work. So I can keep that for future presentations. So I will just briefly talk about boiling, which is, it's a phase change heat transfer. And how we quantify boiling, what are the different mechanisms? And what people have done so far and what they were missing and what we were able to solve. And then I'll just talk about different graphene coatings. Because that again, just start off as trying one thing and then moving to another thing. And I'll just show you some very interesting microscopy photos and where we were able to combine copper and graphene. We created some very interesting morphology to a point that I have framed few of those for my living room work because they are just beautiful. So broader impact, people always say, oh, you do boiling. Other than making ramen noodles, where is it used? Because you see boiling, you always imagine boiling water. So this is a very big problem and a very interesting problem. And it's been used in, so nuclear reactors have steam generators. And a lot of times, what happens, a nuclear reactor is shut down. Not because of the nuclear reactor itself, but because of the boiling issues related to steam generation. So if you want to use nuclear reactors as a clean source of energy, you have to look at the steam generator. So that boiling crisis and the nuclear reactors will become safer to use. Unfortunately, we have a very big nuclear reactors a few miles from here. And then we have been working with them on their steam generation problems. The other applications are solar industry, disk inflation columns. So we do have funding from American Chemical Society Petroleum Research Fund. And we have been looking at designing various coatings for the trays that are used in disk inflation columns. So first, we are looking at the green boiler problem, which has limited number of trays. So the whole idea of studying boiling is to make a lot of processes that are building upon boiling more energy efficient. When I say more energy efficient, I'm trying to say you can boil things at lower temperature. Because when you are using lower temperature, you are inputting lower amounts of energy. As a result, you are saving a lot of money for the industry. So boiling is a face change heat transfer because. When you are heating up the liquid, it becomes vapor. And heat is transferred from that liquid to vapor. So this is all water and this is the surface. And when you're heating up the liquid, you can see each bubble is carrying heat in this. And this is very helpful when you are talking about immersion cooling in electronics and smart grids. They are all looking for immer- working with refrigerants or water. So just to give you a brief heat transfer one O one for our K twelve audience. There are three terms you have to worry about, first is heat flux, so. How much heat is flowing per unit area? And then this wall superheat, so you can see there's a stove and I am boiling a. Cup of water and the bottom surface of the cup. That is touching the heat source is the T surface. And the temperature of the bulk liquid is saturation. The difference between those two temperatures is what we call as wall superheat. And the third one is heat transfer coefficient. It's basically the ratio of heat flow per unit area divided by T saturation. And if you're not a person who likes to see more equations and heat flux values. You can quantify face change by just looking at the bubbles. So you can see how many bubbles are forming per minute. You can see how big they are becoming and how quickly they are departing. So a heat transfer problem is really interesting when we are showing these to our high school kids. Because I tell them, hey, if you are not interested in this equation, do not give up. Just focus, if you are more visual person, just study the bubbles. So I have high school students, they make these videos and then they count the number of bubbles per minute. They measure the diameters and then they just focus on bubble dynamics. And even that solves a bigger piece of the puzzle, how boiling happens. How boiling changes with respect to the surfaces. And next few slides or rest of the presentation, I'm just going to focus more on different surfaces. So I have been talking too much about boiling, so I'm going to actually show you how we quantify boiling. So imagine since if if you have never taken heat transfer, not a problem. Close your eyes, imagine you are boiling a pot full of water. And you have pot of water and you turned on your stove. First thing that happens is the bottom of your pot is becoming hot. Right? And what happens, the fluid, the liquid, the water that is touching that surface is becoming hot. And when that becomes hot, it rises on top. And the liquid that's around it, which is cold, is denser, so that flows towards the bottom. So hot liquid is going up, cold liquid is going down and you're forming connective currents. And that is your first region of reconvection. And the next step, what happens is you start to see those little bubbles coming. And if you're making pasta, that is the time you drop your spaghetti, correct? But if you look at it more carefully, first you see is there are tiny bubbles that are forming and we call it nucleation, the bubbles are nucleating. And as a result, the heat flux, the Y axis starts to go up from A to B point here. And the X axis here, which is not clearly shown, is the saturation temperature, temperature of the bottom surface. And you see there's more, if you boil it more, more bubbles are forming. The bubbles as they go up are taking heat from heat with them. As a result, you'll keep increasing your heat flux. At some point, you reach point C. The point C is the critical heat flux, the maximum heat flux you can achieve. What happens after that? So now your bubbles are forming, you have nice bubbles. And at some point, those bubbles are going to collide, they'll come together. Now they are not round bubbles, they are forming a blanket or a layer. When that layer is formed, your heat flux drops from C to D. Why? Because now that vapor blanket is not allowing any bubbles to go up. That means the bubbles are not going up, the heat transfer is not going up. And the heat transfer drops, your heat flux drops from point C to point D. So these are a couple of videos that my students made, I hope they work. And this shows the film boiling where you have a little tiny film in the bottom and that's creating all these bubbles. And you have your critical heat flux. Because it's really hard to see this effects with the bubble dynamics, you really have to. Increase the speed and see this with a very high magnification. And my students like to add music to the videos if they were to hear some nice background music, that's because. The videos are have to be fun because we show these videos to our high school kids and. They prefer having some very interesting photos and videos with some background music. So how does, so we, so how do these bubbles form and what is the mechanism? So there are three major mechanisms that play an important role in boiling. The first one is micro layer evaporation. So you see a big bubble here and there's a blue rectangle. So your bubble has a puddle of liquid underneath it. So when your surface is heated, that blue rectangle bar becomes the part of the bubble. And bubbles grow and then they depart. And that is called your micro layer evaporation, there's a micro layer liquid that's evaporating of bubble. And then the next one is conduction, you have your. Advanced motion of bubbles and then the liquid surrounding it is become a part of that bubble. And that also creates some kind of oscillation that becomes your micro convection. So of all the three mechanisms, we focused on micro layer evaporation. What I want to do is when bubbles are forming, I want to make sure that liquid stays within the bubbles when one bubble goes. The second bubble is ready to move to the top, which is continuous formation of bubbles. So our research code, again, if you remember, this was our cool boiling curve, the Y axis is critical heat flux, X axis is our surface temperature. So what we focus on is increasing this critical heat flux which is shown by a big star here. But imagine if you keep focusing on, I want to increase heat flux, I'm going to add more temperature. What happens a lot of times, your material burns out, so if you are. So sometimes you buy a pot, cooking pot and after a while you start to see the coating is coming off. And your pots are becoming old and rusty. So that is called the material burnout. So we want to have high critical heat flux, we want to boil but at lower temperature. So in my field, there's a competition, how high can you go in terms of heat flux and how low can you go in terms of temperature? So we keep increasing the start, but we want to stay in lower X axis. So the way we have been doing this by two methods, active and passive. A lot of people have started using micro pumps that moves the bubbles on top. So it's like adding more emotion to it. It has a lot of drawbacks because now you use more energy, you have to clean up those micro pumps. And there are passive methods where you just change the surface properties. You can add more roughness, you can add more coarse to it. And you can make it more hydrophilic because water loves hydrophilic surfaces. So you can change the surfaces and still get very high critical heat flux at a very low temperature. So we thought, let's look at what people have already done, so this basically summarizes the field on one slide. And this was before two thousand fifteen, so on your Y axis, we have critical heat flux. X axis is the size of the surfaces. So when we start looking at the surfaces, we notice the surfaces are seven hundred microns and one thousand microns. People have used micro channels, they machine the surfaces. To increase the surface area, they add coarse to increase the nucleation sites. And they have machine that further to form those fin-like structures that always help in providing the spaces for creating more bubbles. But if you look at those surfaces, so imagine this is my micro surface, correct? And then this temperature at the bottom is different from temperature at the top because these structures are really tall. And that causes a temperature gradient which we don't like. So we started looking at what about nanotechnology, everyone is talking about nanotechnology. And we noticed people have done nano wires, their critical heat flux is one hundred and sixty seven. The saturation is eleven and few other, they have also used viruses to grow these structures. And the critical heat flux was two hundred and fifty seven, which was really good. But then the saturation temperature is thirty three, which is really bad for the industry, so if you are in the industry, you will see this number thirty three, it's a really bad number. So we thought, let's focus on graphene, graphene is a very popular material. And it provides a good thermal properties and it is also very conductive electrically. And so we looked at nano surfaces where we had single graphene. Then we started laying graphene on top of each other, made it from nano to micro. And we just started performing boiling experiments on them. And so on your left, you see a critical heat flux of one forty nine with single layer of graphene, so if you have never seen a single layer of graphene. This is how it looks like on figure B. This is a single layer of graphene on copper. On your right side, you see three layers of copper, three layers of graphene on copper. And the critical heat flux didn't change much from one forty nine to one fifty seven. And the saturation temperature was eighteen, so that gave us some idea that if you use graphene, your temperature is lowered from thirty three all the way to eighteen. And so we started making our own graphene, if you are interested in making graphene. A lot of high school students try to do this in our labs, we buy graphite block. And then they exfoliate it with scotch tape and then they form graphene. And then they are happy that they are making graphene and we do this electrochemically where instead of scotch tape, we use. Oxygen gas that strips the graphene layers from the graphite block. And then we dip coat our chips, so this is a graphene solution, you put your copper on top of it. The graphene is transferred on copper, you let it dry. And once you let it dry, the graphene gets deposited on copper. And if you let it dip for two minutes, this is how it looks like, you see those little tower-like structures. And if you let it sit for five minutes, now the structures are becoming more flat. And if you keep increasing the duration of dipping of copper on graphene. You are forming more flat structures. And we just looked at the heat flux, so again, our goal is to increase the heat flux, reduce the wall superheat. So on your right, you will see our graphene, on your left, you see the graphene that was bought from the stores. And we were able to increase the heat flux all the way to two hundred at a lower superheat of eighteen. So we knew that the more graphene you add, you are able to increase the heat flux and you are staying at a lower wall superheat. So again, we looked at different coatings, we looked at just copper, we looked at single layer of graphene, we looked at multiple layers of graphene. And this is what we thought, you know, multiple layers of graphene have little pockets in them, those pockets help in growth of the bubble. Since I'm running out of the time, I will skip some of the summaries and I just show you some of the interesting. Figures we had, so after we knew the graphene worked. A lot of industry people don't like graphene, it's expensive, it's not industry approved. So we started adding a little bit of graphene to copper. On your left, you see tooth-like structures and these particles were screen printed in an oven. On your right, you see those winter fir trees and these were electro deposited graphene on copper. And we started focusing on graphene nanoplatelets, also known as GNP, these are tiny graphene particles. They are small sheets and they are very easy to work with, they are not big sheets, they are small particles and so they mix very well with copper particles. And I'm going to skip that because I know I am running out of the time. I just show you some of the interesting figures we have here. So what we did, we added graphene nano platelets to copper. And as you can see this S E M image. The red dot that you see the cherries in the bush, the green dot, the green grass-like structure is the copper and those little red cherries are graphene. So you were able to combine graphene and copper together. And you can see this image, there are big pockets or pores and they help with our boiling activities. I'm going to skip through this and show you this very interesting set of photos, so. The top one is just copper, just copper particles. And on your right, that says point five percent, so we added point five percent graphene to those copper particles. And you can see the sizes reduced and there were more holes or pockets within those particles. And when you add one percent graphene, now you see those structures are becoming bigger. So these spacings help in our boiling process, then we added two way percent and you can see there are holes. And there are holes within holes, so there's so many pores and holes that help in the boiling process. And so I just quickly show you and give you a comparison of how we perform. So we were, we broke the world record with this type of substrates. Where we just work with graphene nanoplatelets and added them to the copper surface. And so I will start with the left plot. So the left one, as you can see, is the critical heat flux and T saturation. And here we are about at three hundred critical heat flux and wall superheat of twelve degrees Celsius. So if you compare this with a regular copper that people use in industry. You have one hundred and thirty percent critical heat flux improvement. And two hundred and ninety percent heat transfer coefficient, so. This type of coatings broke the world record because. People have been machining, they didn't, they didn't think about just adding a little bit of graphene to copper to improve the copper surface overall. So how does this work? How does graphene improvise the surfaces? So here you have orange dots that are copper, the black stuff is graphene. And the green circles here represent the holes or the pores. So those pores help in formation of bubbles and then what happens, bubbles go up. And then the liquid goes in the bubbles. And it's been resupplied by the surrounding liquid and they form more bubbles. And when they go up, new bubbles form. And these pores are seen here on the S E M image, that is green and red, the red parts are a little graphene, the green part is copper. And so if you compare this with all of our work in the past, so the pink line represents the graphene nanoplatelets. Compared to the black triangles, which is the copper that has been used in industry now. So as you can see, the copper has a heat flux of one twenty five, we were able to increase it to three hundred. And the saturation temperature is twenty two and then we increased it to ten, decreased it to ten degrees Celsius. So with this, we were able to create coatings that can be used in electronic devices because graphene only helps in electrical properties. And this can also be used in evaporators and refrigerant industries. We also work with a lot of different methods. And here we have, let's see, the image number G. You see graphene is wrapped around copper particles. So we just threw them in the mill, the copper particles and graphene were milked. And the graphene sheets were covered by copper particles. And they performed really good, this was accepted and scientifically proposed two weeks ago. And currently, the students are working on a NASA project where they are working on heat sinks, developing these copper materials. And another project we are focusing on is photodynamic therapy for cancer applications. U.S. of Toledo has a medical campus. So they really enjoy working with engineers on a variety of different bioengineering projects. This is one of those applications. And with this, I will be happy to take your questions.
This is Brian Brady, I have a question if no one else. I'm working propulsion, we're usually working with engines. And they are very often regeneratively cooled with the propellant. And so one of the things we always end up talking about is the transition from nucleate boiling to film boiling. And the, a debate that often happens is whether the surface roughness matters. Because some people polish the surfaces of their cooling channels and some don't. And I was wondering if you had, could weigh in on that?
Yeah, so since we do fundamental work in our lab and we have very small testing setup and chip. So we have noticed if you have rough surfaces, they basically, when you say roughness, in our theme, we talk about more roughness, that means more pores and more open spacing that allows higher nucleation and that prevents the formation of film boiling. So we have done some, some of these tests on polished surfaces as opposed to rough surfaces. And if you have rough surface, it delays the film boiling.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, when you do this experiment, it's involving the boiling, the temperature might be high. So they also measure about involving some students. So is any safety concern? You know, we have to be very careful or the equipment is already very safe.
So we have designed multiple layers of safety around the instrument. And we have computers to collect the data. So we really don't get close to the, once we have our chips and surfaces in the setup, everything is logged. We just sit on the computer and generate the data. This is very safe. And when we are testing refrigerants or petroleum components, we have them in a safety hood, chemical safety hood, and it's all enclosed. So in terms of safety, we make sure we are following all the protocols.
Hi, Dr. Gupta, this is Joyce Lea from Stanford. Really enjoyed your talk and personal stories. I want to ask you, in terms of your experience mentoring students, sometimes they bring in a lot of energy and enthusiasm at that stage, but they literally know almost nothing. And so I was wondering if you could talk about your experience sort of fostering them and helping them actually build the skills that will allow them to actually write papers or do research.
That's a very interesting question because a lot of times the students come, oh, I love designing flying cars. That's all they come up with. If I'm a mechanical engineer, I'm going to design a flying car that will be up in the sky next semester. So a lot, lot of times, they don't realize how much fundamental knowledge you have to generate with basic experiments to really design a car. That would take you few decades and then going it up in the air would take another few years. So it's always a challenge when they come, they, you tell them, hey, I do this. And then this is applicable in nuclear design, nuclear reactor. They just come with a point, oh, I'm going to solve the world's energy crisis. I will design a safe nuclear reactor. And you show them this cool boiling setup and this local steam generator. And then here they are sitting in front of a computer, looking at the graph going, heat flux going up. And then where is the nuclear reactor you talked about? So this happens a lot of times. And so the way I handle is for undergraduates or high school students, we create a layer of mentoring. So I would have a PhD student work with few masters with undergraduates. And oftentimes, when they are presenting their work, I remind them, so this is a flying car. What part of the puzzle you are solving now? So we always try to connect them with the big picture. So if they are doing boiling, I'm saying, this is a nuclear reactor, show me where you are at now. And so it's always, it's a challenge, but you have to keep reminding them every little problem you're solving is helping solve the bigger problem. So that has been a challenge that you start to see the energy level drops because this is not what I signed up for. And you just have to keep them interested. And of course, like you mentioned, writing is a bigger challenge even for grad students. And even for faculty, there I have been on a lot of writing groups with faculty, faculty complain, I have no motivation to write. So it's one of the challenges. And I always tell them, you know, think about writing as you're writing your biography, autobiography. And what you did yesterday in the lab, just think that you are writing autobiography and write it that way. So there are, it's been an ongoing challenge and I'm trying to find ways to keep them motivated.
Thank you.
I'll just, just a quick, in your chart, I mentioned the super critical boiling. And they showed that, you know, X axis, it says surface temperature, temperature on the top of the bubble. But with the temperature, absolute temperature on the surface also matters? Or is only the difference, the delta T?
So the surface of the temperature matters and the absolute temperature difference of the bulk liquid and the surface also matters?
Okay, so you still need some kind of temperature on the surface? So it's not just a difference? Okay. Well, I think you see the two positive comments in the Q and A. Did you see it?
Yes.
Did you see them?
Thank you so much for your wonderful feedback.
Yes?
Yes, I see that.
Yeah, yeah, very good. You know, people are very interested in all this, your research and the teaching philosophy. Certainly very important and your experience of, you know, moving around, you know, educating people, very, very important.
I have another question about the beautiful covers that you've designed. I was curious if you basically look for opportunities to be able to get the cover. So I assume these are accompanying some kind of original research or a review paper? And then there's a cover to go with it? Yeah, tell us how you were able to find these opportunities.
So oftentimes, when you submit a journal publication and if that work has some nice schematics, they would sometimes come back to you saying, hey, are you interested in being on a journal cover? If you can create a graphic that represents your work. So oftentimes, I never got a chance where I could offer. Usually journals would come to you. So if, in a year, if I publish eight papers, maybe, you know, one or two of them would ask me, hey, are you interested on journal cover? Being on the journal cover? And I would say yes. And they would say, hey, by the way, it's a competition. You have to submit your artwork and if you like it, we'll, we'll put you on the cover. So I feel like, you know, I'm competing with the artist who are in scientific world, who also have hobbies like me and who really like to bring their artist inside of them. And so it's, it's, I have, I would say, I just, like, this year has been really lucky. I was invited by three journalists to be on the journal cover. But all these years, I wanted to, but they never asked me. It just happened, so one journal reached out to me and I sent them. And then I had another paper in review and they said, hey, do you want to submit journal covers? So I think if you present one journal cover, like one piece of art here, I can also think artistically. A lot more will start coming your way.
And what do you use to generate the, these designs?
So one of them, typically what I do is I try to use my microscopy image from my results. And I try to develop or draw something on top of it. So the background is my, my, my data. And we use Adobe Illustrator, Photoshop.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
Because people think, oh, it's a nice drawing, but you develop the layers. There's a layer of background, then the second layer of one drawing, the third layer of the lightning effects. You know, it's a reflection, so it's a lot of work. But since I like doing it on the paints, oil paint, I don't mind doing it electronically.
Yeah, thank you.
And I noticed you have this journal STEM education or teacher, something like that. That's kind of very interesting thing. So does it require like a professor like you to publish on it? What kind of requirement for that kind of?
So for journalism education, the high school teachers and middle school teachers can also submit. So over the years, I have learned, you can design an activity. But if you try to publish it, they said, what, how much did the students learn? So what I do, before I teach them an activity, I give them a survey. What do you know about this subject? And they probably sometimes have some idea, but not a lot. And then we give this activity, they do it, we give them a lecture. And then we have a survey after the activity. And then we ask the same questions. And now they can answer it better because they have learned something. And so assessment is the key when you are trying to publish in STEM education journals. You have to demonstrate what students liked, what they didn't like, how much they learned and how much they were able to apply. So my niece is nine years old. And few years ago, she did an experiment in her kindergarten or some school where she shined the pennies. And she's like, auntie, see, the pennies were so old and I shine them and they are so shiny. And I said, that's great, what did you do? And she said, I don't know, we just did some sciencey stuff like you do and then pennies were shining. And I was very unhappy because I said, hey, your auntie is a scientist. I can actually show you and explain how it worked. So that is always motivational that, you know, you have to, you can, hands-on activities are good. But you really have to make them learn the science behind it. And it takes a lot of efforts, but I hope the teachers, you know, can maybe design activities at a student level and maybe have some assessments. So all of those, those can go on STEM education journals. So it's a personal motivation to make students learn if something worked. If this is not a miracle, there's a science behind it and this is how it worked and why it worked.
Is that only for K-12 or is STEM, is a standard K-12 or all kind of?
Also, it's an, so you can also publish your college-level labs. So we developed fluid dynamics, heat transfer labs. And we can, if you have a very interesting lab module, we want to share it with other universities. You can publish in STEM education journal.
Fantastic. Well, this is really amazing. We really got the multiple, you know, positive feedback and joy, you know, for everyone, Jim. So thank you very much again, Dr. Gupta. Very exciting talk and thank you for sharing. So stay in touch. As you said, we have more opportunity to work with you. Yeah, thank you so much.
For the invitation. I'm so glad I didn't have to fly and this is wonderful. I can just stay.
It is cool, it's cool. Okay, yeah, welcome, welcome. Okay, so our next speaker.